I have an approval of the agenda with different changes to the consent agenda. Item eight point seven, name of the bills and approval of invoices. We're going to back that out of the consent agenda and vote on that separately. That's a separate item. And we have one addition to the consent consent agenda. Item eight, item point one three. Contract for additional great point licenses. So if I have a motion to accept the approval of the agenda with those two changes. Second discussion. Here it is. I'll turn it over to this is Elaine Bowe. Retired. You guys can have a seat.
Everyone. Trying to turn myself down a little bit. It's good to see so many of you joining us this evening. Welcome to Spring Mills High School and thank you for coming to the annual Berkeley County Schools Retirement Celebration. The Berkeley County Board of Education recognizes our employees each month at a board meeting, but tonight is truly special. Speaking on behalf of our Board of Education and administrators, more colleagues and students, we are sincerely grateful that you are here and that we can honor you in your service. Let me tell you about the group of sixty nine employees that are retiring from Berkeley County Schools. Collectively this year, this group of distinguished service and professional personnel have set one thousand seven hundred and seventy six years of service to Berkeley County Schools and our students. There are thirty eight service personnel and thirty one professional. There are three staff members with forty years of service and one with forty three and a half years. This group of retirees represents twenty different schools, curriculum instruction, child nutrition, maintenance, special education, technology and transportation. Each of you shares a passion for educating and caring for the children of Berkeley County. Thank you again for giving so much of yourselves to our school system. Before we meet the retirees who have joined us this evening, I think there are twenty one of you. I would like to thank the Board of Education members and administrators of Berkeley County Schools who have joined us this evening. It is my pleasure to introduce them to you at this time. I ask that they stand to be recognized and please hold applause until the end. Ronnie Delonger, Deputy Superintendent of Schools. David Banks, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Instruction. Jim Butts, Chief Financial Officer. David Dilly, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education. Ron Stevens, Assistant Superintendent of People's Services. I think he's over there on dark. Dr. Randy Walker, Associate Superintendent of Equity and Inclusion. Thank you all very much. Oh, Dr. Justin Schooley. Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Sorry, Justin. Thank you all. And now I'd like to introduce our Board of Education and invite them to join me on stage so that I can provide a fist bump or an elbow touch to each retired member that has joined us this evening. Dr. Derek Hilton, our President. Todd Beckwith, Vice President. Ms. Jackie Waller, member. Mr. Michael Martin, member. Mr. Pat Murphy, member. And our Superintendent, Dr. Patrick Murphy. To our twenty twenty one retirees who have served most people with great pride and enthusiasm. It is time for us to celebrate this milestone of each of you in attendance this evening. The words that I share about you tonight capture just a glimpse of the work and dedication you have provided. Please know that you are appreciated for the many, many years of service you have provided to our students. Here's how it's going to work this evening. Retiree, as I announce your name, I ask that you join us on stage by using the stairs hat and the Deputy Superintendent's collar. I ask that your principal or supervisor who has joined you this evening will let you on the opposite side so that you can be photographed together. If you cross the stage, you will be presented with a small gift and words of appreciation from our Board of Education. Here we go. Start with Sherri Dunham from Hedgesville Elementary School. Sherri Dunham is celebrated music educator retired last year after thirty two devoted years to public service and education. She began her career in Berkeley County in nineteen eighty and traveled between Burke, Beddington and Marlowe Elementary Schools. In nineteen ninety one, she joined the Hedgesville Elementary School staff and spent the remaining thirty years as a Hedgesville Eagle. One of Ms. Dunham's most significant memories in her long career as an elementary music teacher was her annual hosting of choral concerts. Reflecting back, she says those performances joined everything beautiful about public education. All of the children's learning, their hard work, the pride of their parents and family members, all combined together in a wonderful event. Besides teaching all of the children in the school from the time they enrolled to the accommodating student body of six hundred and fifty students, Ms. Dunham spent hours of preparation each season on student performances. As an educator and a person, Sherri Dunham has always been positive, always supportive, a genuinely warm and devoted individual who may wish well in her retirement. Congratulations, Mrs. Dunham. Willa Gaynor from Hedgesville Elementary School. That's right, you can whip it up out there for people if you want. Time to get rowdy. Ms. Willa Gaynor is retiring from Hedgesville Elementary this year after thirty one years of service. Ms. Gaynor is best described as gentle and dedicated teacher who always reaches her students where they are and puts their needs first. She began her Berkeley County Schools teaching career at Berkeley Heights, teaching second and third natives until nineteen ninety nine, nineteen ninety nine, and then transitioned to Hedgesville Elementary. Twenty four years of her outstanding career were spent teaching kindergarten students. It's the three most recent years as a second grade teacher at Hedgesville Elementary. When I asked about her fondest memories of her incredible education career, she said, "I love working with young children. There's nothing like seeing a child grasp a concept for the first time. It's a great feeling and I feel blessed that I got to experience that with all these children." Ms. Gaynor has provided countless students with a rock solid education and more importantly, a deep caring educator. In the recent education shift caused by COVID circumstances, Ms. Gaynor was one of the first to step to the plate, learning new technology and embracing constant pivot required for success. We would like to thank Mrs. Gaynor and wish her the very best of luck. We have another Hedgesville Elementary. I hope there'll be some people left there this year. We have Ursula McBeal. Ursula is retiring after thirty one years in public education of Berkeley County Schools. Her early teaching career was first spent at Potomac Intermediate teaching third grade for four years and then at Apeken Elementary, teaching fourth grade for six years. Ms. McBeal shares her fondest memories looking back on her career as the lifelong friendships that she has made with the most amazing educators. I wouldn't have had a wonderful career without their laughter, love and support. Twenty one years of her educational career were spent as a Hedgesville Elementary educator, first and fourth grade, and finally closing out her career with sixteen years as a vibrant, caring second grade teacher. Ms. McBeal has always encouraged children to embrace their strengths and has always been a dedicated member of the school community. Congratulations on your dedicated service to public education and have a great time on your retirement adventures. Okay, we're moving to Hedgesville High School, Mark Norris. Mark Norris has worked as a counselor in Berkeley County Schools for thirty five years and Hedgesville High School has been lucky to have him for thirty four of those years. Mark has also coached and mentored many, many students through the Hedgesville High School track and field program. Mark has been outstanding in his commitment to the students at Hedgesville High School. Mark, we will be greatly missed and congratulations on your retirement. I want to tell all of our retirees that the pictures that are being taken this evening will be posted to our Flickr account and later this week I'll email to you, still using your school email, the link where you'll be able to find your pictures from this evening, okay? Martinsburg North Middle School, we have Rosalie Davis. Rosalie Davis, known as Rosie, has worked as a cook for Berkeley County School System since two thousand and four. Thank you. She spent five years at Berkeley Heights and she is retiring from North Middle School this year. She will be particularly missed by her fellow cook, Amanda Reller, who says, "I'm a miss caring mom and giving Rosie a hard time every day. She made it so easy to pick on her and next year will not be the same without her. She may come into work fun and there will never be another Rosie for me." Ms. Davis is active in her church. She has traveled to Africa and the Philippines on mission trips and plans to do more. She will spend time, quality time with her husband Kevin upon her retirement and she also plans to volunteer in the community and go to the gym. She has two dogs, Josie and Riley, that she inherited from her daughter Tara. We wish her every happiness as she enjoys her retirement. Brenda Nolan from Mill Creek Intermediate. Brenda is retiring this school year after dedicating sixteen years to Berkeley County Schools. Brenda spent ten of these years at Mill Creek Intermediate as a cook. There's been a lot of fun happening in that kitchen at Mill Creek, hasn't there? Oh, yeah. It's the best, she says. Brenda brought laughter to one of the best kitchens around. She can always be found playing tricks, laughing and bringing smiles to those around her. Brenda was honored to be chosen as a Career Day speaker for Mill Creek Career Day. The students were so intrigued by what goes on behind the scenes with school kitchen and school nutrition. Brenda is looking forward to spending her retirement with the grandchildren, her children and her husband Rodney. She will be greatly missed in the kitchen at Mill Creek and we wish her the best. Ms. Wendy Bird is retiring from Mountain Ridge Intermediate. Ms. Wendy Bird, fourth grade teacher at Mountain Ridge Intermediate, has served as an elementary educator in Berkeley County Schools for thirty four years. She has taught children, hundreds of children who have attended Tomahawk, Tuscaloosa, Hedgesville Middle and most recently, Mountain Ridge Intermediate. Ms. Bird has served on several county and school committees, including textbook adoption, Ovea's and the Superintendent Leadership Committee. She has written and received sixteen grants while at Mountain Ridge Intermediate, including one to build a school garden. Ms. Bird was part of the first Berkeley County Schools' Ovea's Community Carnival and was a pioneer in the Mountain Ridge Intermediate Ovea's School and Community Event. Ms. Bird served as the BCEA President for ten years. She was a Berkeley County Schools Teacher of the Year finalist in two thousand and six and two thousand and fifteen. Ms. Bird has molded the minds of children for more than three decades. We wish her the best as she now has more time to spend with her three sons and four granddaughters. Thank you, Ms. Bird, for sharing your love of reading and learning with our students. Linda Benner from Muselman Middle School. Is Linda here? Let me tell you about Linda. Ms. Benner has been with Berkeley County Schools for thirty four years. She has taught the learning disabled at Muselman Middle for twenty seven. One of her favorite memories was a year that Muselman Middle has a special day with a program called Muselman Gives Back. It was a fundraiser for programs at the American Heart Association and fighting cancer. Today included fun games for students, activities, picnic food and lots of conversation. There was not one day that they did not, she did not make me laugh, or teaching was something that it was one of the best years of teaching she had ever had. She says she will miss her Muselman family, that's the place, uh, let's see. Most definitely, she will miss her morning duty in the office. That's the place where she garnered the strength for the day. And she said lastly, she will miss the students. That is the reason she chose a path of teaching. Thank you, Linda. Okay, Julie Moore from Muselman Middle School. Ms. Moore has taught in Berkeley County for forty years. She began her career in nineteen eighty one. She has been with Muselman Middle School as a science teacher for fifteen years. She has also worked at Hedgesville Middle, Valley View for sixteen years and Potomac for eight years. She will miss Muselman Middle's tight knit family and community. She will miss teaching the students and sharing in their learning and she will miss her wonderful colleagues and the great time she has had at school both inside and out. She could not end without saying that she will miss teaching with her buddy of forty years, Pam Wachtel. Ms. Moore has been deemed our school mom of several staff members in which she takes care of and makes sure they are doing what they are supposed to do. What if they're here tonight? We are considering having her come back as a school mom and a consultant for next year. Thanks, Julie. So Pam Wachtel, sounds like she might be the sidekick here. Pam is coming to us from Muselman Middle School. Ms. Wachtel has worked for Berkeley County Schools for forty years. She has taught sixth grade math and social studies at Muselman Middle for fifteen years. She has also worked at Potomac Intermediate for eight and Valley View for seventeen. According to Mrs. Wachtel, after the past fifteen years, Muselman Middle School feels like a second home to her. She will truly miss the kindness and compassion shown to her by her colleagues over the years. She will especially miss teaching with her buddy Julia Moore, who she has taught with for thirty nine years. Ms. Wachtel is the person always on the ball no matter the circumstances. If you needed information, she has it. She is meticulous and long term planning as second to none. She routinely pushes her students to success. Thank you, Pamela. Mary Ellen Becker, Potomac Intermediate School. Mary Ellen Becker earned a bachelor's degree in speech collection from West Chester University of Pennsylvania. Later, she acquired a master of science degree in speech language pathology from McAllen University of Pennsylvania. She served as a speech pathologist in Salem, New Jersey for six years. Thereafter, she provided service as a speech language pathologist for Tucker County Schools in Parsons, West Virginia for twenty two years. In two thousand and eight, Mary Ellen continued her body of work in Berkeley County. She is retiring from Potomac Intermediate after thirteen years. Mary Ellen is praised for her work with students. She is a hard worker who has been known to stay late nights. She is passionate about speech pathology. She has a natural ability to engage students and recently she served as a mentor and supervising speech pathologist. Mary Ellen Becker has a personable, witty and calm disposition. Her colleagues give testimony to enjoy conversations, humor and stories. She has been enjoyed to be around and is friends among all. Mary Ellen, on behalf of the Potomac Eagle family, thank you for your dedication of helping students realize their potential to the point of dismissing several students from her service for achieving their speech goals. You have brought a huge impact on our school community. Your presence in the building will be sorely missed. Potomac Eagle, you will be a Potomac Eagle for life. Best wishes to a wonderful life and a new journey closer to your children and grandchildren. Joining us now is Robert Brathwaite from Potomac Intermediate School. Robert, or Bob Brathwaite, has spent thirteen years in Berkeley County Schools as a custodian. He spent his career with Martinsburg High School, Winchester Avenue, Hedgesville High School, Spring Mills Middle School and Potomac Intermediate. He has spent the last ten years at Potomac and Potomac has received praise from visitors, board members, senior staff for the cleanliness and upkeep of the building. It is evident that the facility and equipment are well taken care of, which is indicative of a sense of pride Bob and his custodial team have for Potomac. Further, Bob is an administrator in his own right. He is perceptive, observant and keen on what the school needs. He has a heart of gold. Several colleagues shared testimonies of the kind and vocal gestures demonstrated over the course of his time at Potomac. On several occasions, he has walked teachers to their car at night. He frequently provided home cooked meals prepared by his wife to a teacher he knew would work through dinner. Occasionally on cold nights, he would buy teachers with hot chocolate and extra marshmallows. Bob is a generous person who always has a piece of gum, candy and food to offer. He will be missed. Bob, you are a Potomac Eagle for life. Best wishes on a relaxing and rejuvenating new journey. Ms. Kim Miller from Rosemont Elementary. Kim Miller has been a teacher with Berkeley County Schools for nineteen years. She has taught third grade at Potomac Intermediate for one year, first grade at Apeken Elementary for ten years and first grade at Rosemont for eight years. Mrs. Miller began her working life as a hairdresser and did this occupation for twenty three years. She made a life changing decision to fulfill her dream of going to college to get her teaching degree. It is a decision that she has never regretted and we are so grateful that she chose Rosemont to live out her dream. Teaching first grade comes very naturally to her. She has often told me how much she loves to teach and it certainly shows. She has touched countless students' lives over her time teaching as well as staff members. Mrs. Miller is quick witted and fun to be around. She says not only has it been wonderful to teach, the students at Rosemont were a fantastic first grade team and school staff. It has been a great joy to be able to teach in the same school with my sister Heather and for the past few years to teach with my daughter Sam. Very few have had that kind of opportunity and I am going to miss seeing them every day. She now passes the first grade teaching torch to her daughter along with her entire classroom of materials. What a special way everything has worked out. Mrs. Miller has plans for her retirement. She just wants to enjoy being home and she and her husband Jim plan to do a bit of traveling and sightseeing around West Virginia and nearby states. I know that she will spend a lot of time with her family too. Her sister and daughter will miss seeing her every day. We will all miss Mrs. Miller, but we wish her a much deserved retirement filled with happiness. Okay, Spring Mills Middle School has Dino Cavallis. Dino has spent like thirty nine years as the band director of various schools. He has spent all fifteen of his years in Berkeley County as the band director at Spring Mills Middle. Dino is one of those rare teachers who can hear a student whose instrument is out of tune on one side of the room while at the same time catching another student who is talking on the other side of the room. Dino is one of the nicest and most kind hearted teachers you will ever meet. One can always find him with a smile and a positive attitude and he maintains his calm and relaxed composure all the time, even when none of his fifty students can seem to find the F flat. It is because of how he treats his students that they love him and it is because of the trust and respect he built with his students that his students have been able to flourish. Thank you, Mr. Cavallis, for everything you have done over the last four decades to instill a love of music and that thousands of students could have had the opportunity to have you as their band director. Spring Mills Middle School, we have Mary Weller. Although Mary Lou only spent the last year at Spring Mills Middle School, her patriot colleagues in the special ed department and each of her students has benefited greatly from her knowledge, expertise and kindness. She showed her students each and every day during her year at Spring Mills Middle School and her eighteen years at Hedgesville Middle School how deeply she cares about them and how much she loves teaching. She was patient and nurturing at all times and she always went above and beyond to ensure her students felt safe, respected and appreciated. If you visited her classroom while she was teaching, you would sense the calm and comfort she gave her students and she always wanted to show visitors what her class was learning that day. She would ask the students a question to check for understanding and several excited hands would raise anticipation and anticipation of being picked, each one wanting to show Mrs. Weller that they knew the answer. Thank you, Mrs. Weller, for your steadfast love and dedication you have shown to each and every one of your students and here's to many happy days of enjoyment and traveling in your retirement. Carolyn West from Spring Mills Middle School. Carolyn has spent almost twenty two years with Berkeley County Schools keeping her principles in line as the financial secretary and school accountant. She started her career at Apeken Elementary in two thousand and one before briefly moving into Berkeley Heights and Tuscaloosa Elementary. She spent the last seventeen years at Spring Mills Middle School. She is as good as it gets at her job. Her knowledge of school finance, record keeping and budget management is unparalleled and her meticulous attention to detail is a refined skill that cannot be taught. She is the go to person in our county whenever someone has a challenging problem or difficult question involving school finances and she is always happy to help. I'm not sure our administrative team, especially Dr. Potten, could have made it through the last two years without her calm and collected demeanor and her quick wit. Carolyn, on behalf of the Patriots, to him who explained how to do a purchase order more than one time, thank you for your dedication to your job and your school and enjoy spending your much deserved retirement with your husband Ralph and daughter Megan. Anna Robertson, but Ian Robertson, I'm sorry, Tomahawk Intermediate. Ever since first grade, Ian knew she wanted to teach children. She used to go home every day after school and play school with her brother who was fourteen months younger. So teaching children has been a dream come true for her. After graduating from Duquesne University in Pittsburgh with a degree in elementary education, she was a classroom teacher for a while in Pennsylvania and later in Maryland. She felt a calling to instruct small groups of children as an intervention teacher of reading and math. She decided to become a reading specialist by earning a master's degree in reading that would help to prepare her. She achieved this goal by studying at the University of Pittsburgh where she graduated with a master's degree. where she graduated with a master's degree. Toward the end of her studies at the University of Pittsburgh, she was recruited to teach as Title I teacher in Maryland. She was very happy in her new teaching role, where she stayed for about seven years. During this time, she was single, but that was about to change. One summer, she was doing volunteer work by helping the Missionary Sisters of Charity in Washington, DC. During that stage, she met a young man, Sandy, who was on a business trip at the time. Later, he would become the husband and is still her husband today. He was in DC on a business trip that summer. Even though she was resigning in Scotland, they managed to see each other often enough to know that marriage was the next step. After getting married, they lived in Scotland for seven years. During that time, her two children, Fiona and John, were born. Scotland is a beautiful country with many friendly people. However, one problem with what she knew was that she missed teaching in America. Her husband Sandy was willing to move to Berkeley County. It all worked out since they both found employment. She taught for almost twenty years as an intervention reading and math teacher. Most of the time, it's been at Tomahawk Intermediate, where she has enjoyed her career. Roger Lark from the Transportation Office. He is bus operator number seventy-two. Mr. Lark has worked at Berkeley County Schools for fifteen years. He served as a bus operator for the inbound area for most of those years. Mr. Lark, really important to getting the day started off right by greeting each student with a joyful hello and welcome to each student on his bus. He is dependable, hard-working, and dedicated to his job, and loved working with the children. Mr. Lark did not like to miss work, so you can imagine what he felt like when he fell off his roof and injured his legs. Now known, he is a much better operator than he is a reaver. We will miss Mr. Lark's enthusiasm for driving students to and from school, and we wish him well as he moves forward and continued good health. Hasn't anyone remembered our bus driver? Yeah. Okay. Sharon Dove from the Central Office. Sharon has been working for Berkeley County Schools for twenty years. She began in two thousand and one as a computer programming teacher at Hedgesville High School. She has been working in the Central Office as the Assistant Director of Instructional Technology since two thousand and nineteen. With technology constantly changing, Sharon has been invaluable to our district. She has been in the forefront of technology advancement and has always been focused on student achievement. Sharon has been an instrumental part of the one-to-one initiative in our district. She is passionate about integrating technology into the classroom content to create rich classroom experiences for all students. Sharon and her husband Beck have two children, Casey and Sam. Both are recent graduates from Texas A&amp;M with degrees in engineering and currently reside in Texas. The curriculum and instruction department would like to wish Sharon the best of luck in this new phase of her life. They say, Sharon, I really want to miss you. Our last retiree that we'll celebrate this evening is actually the retiree with forty-three and a half years of service, this is Don Dellinger, our Deputy Superintendent of Instruction. You've got to pull up a chair. I've got a lot to say about you. Donnie attended Berkeley County Schools starting at Marlowe Elementary. He then went to North Mill School. With redistricting, he ended up attending Hedgesville Junior High and Hedgesville High School. He's a nineteen-seventy-four graduate. He played four sports for the Eagles: football, basketball, baseball, and track. He returned to Hedgesville High School in December of nineteen-seventy-seven after graduating from WVU in three and a half years. Donnie began as a math teacher. Although he coached many sports, his true love was football. He became athletic director in nineteen-ninety, followed by the Athletic Director Assistant Principal and Principal in nineteen-ninety-nine. During this time, he was the West Virginia Athletic Director of the Year and West Virginia Principal of the Year. Donnie became Assistant Superintendent of Instruction in July two thousand and eleven and Deputy Superintendent of Secondary Instruction in July of two thousand and twelve. Donnie has served on numerous boards across the state representing Berkeley County for both athletics and academics. He has even had the opportunity to work with the National Federation of High Schools in Indianapolis and has presented at their national conferences. He continues to teach leadership classes and remains active in the West Virginia Athletic Directors Association. He was the first certified Master Athletic Administrator in West Virginia. He has also received the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators' Distinguished Service Award. He is a member of the Marlowe Elementary School Hall of Fame and Hedgesville High School Athletic Hall of Fame. Berkeley County has always been his home. His mother also graduated from Berkeley County Schools. He met his wife Jerry when they were both teaching at Hedgesville High School. Amanda, their daughter, was a product of Berkeley County Schools. Her time growing up around her father and mother, serving the community through athletics and education, inspired her to become a teacher, a coach, and eventually an assistant principal in Berkeley County. When Amanda was about six years old, she was handing out programs at the Hedgesville High School graduation. Someone asked her how she ended up with that job. She simply said, "I was born into this." That says it all. It's easy to say that Don loves and loves the community, but his reach extends so much further than that. Although he only taught and coached in Hedgesville High School, his students and athletes now teach for administrators in probably every school in our county. He has also been a mentor to many assistant principals and principals. He has always been instrumental in the planning and building of Spring Mills High School. We want to thank Donnie for his many years of service to Berkeley County Schools, for his dedication to his colleagues and to his students, and we really want to miss you, Donnie. So now I'm going to ask our board members if you will return to your seats for a couple minutes. Normally, they start their meetings up here on the stage, but because of our special event this evening and the way our stage is set up where we have them down front. And now I'm going to introduce Dr. Patrick Murphy. He is our superintendent, and he has a few closing remarks for us.
Well, good evening. It is a pleasure to be here, and it's a special evening. We've recognized a variety of different people this evening, but I want to start by recognizing partners, spouses, family members, or even friends. If you know any of the retirees here this evening that we're honoring, would you please stand so we can recognize you and thank you? Having a spouse, I know many of the things that I deal with on a day-to-day basis come home with me, and I have that support system there available. And you folks have been a part of Berkeley County and the support system, and we want to recognize you as well. Thank you for being here with us this evening. I also want to make note that we have either supervisors or principals here who have accompanied their retirees. I want to thank them for coming out, but I'd also ask them to please stand so we can recognize them. Thank you to our supervisors and principals who are here this evening. Your presence sends a very positive message about the fact that it is a team approach. Now, there was a whole lot of preparation and organization that had to occur to have this evening happen, and I want to recognize those individuals as well. From our HR department, Dr. Justin School, Ian Pan Brock. From our communication team, we had Phoebe Blent. Phoebe, come on, step out of the corridor there, the little hallway, and be recognized. Tabitha Fullerfield, who is our photographer this evening, but also behind the scenes. And then Miss Elaine Boebow, who did a stage left exit fast for her work as well. I always like to say that no one is retiring. You're only going on to the next adventure in your life. And so I wish you well in that next adventure, whether that be whatever endeavors you, you know, consider. And I hope you will reflect and remember your time here with us in Berkeley County. And with that, there will be many fond memories, I'm sure, come September or August when school starts. And probably around October, you're going to say, you know what? I bet I'd like to maybe come back and work part-time or substitute in our schools. And I would welcome you back with open arms. So just keep that option in the back of your mind. If you, around October, November, are having, you know, the desire to interact with friends and colleagues and children again, that door is always open. But whatever you do, we wish you the best. And I want to just say, we thank you very much for your years of service and your time here. We've made a difference, and I hope you carry those memories with you for the rest of your life. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Were there any retirees that I missed this evening? Is anybody here that wishes they were retiring? I want to thank you all again for joining us this evening. I invite you to stay for the rest of our board meeting. Otherwise, we're going to take about a ten-minute break so we can reset the stage for the rest of our meeting. We will be introducing our Council of the Year when we meet again. So if you'd like to stay around, we'd love to have you. And congratulations again. Have a safe trip and a great summer. And congratulations again. Have a safe trip and a great summer.
Actually, we'll go ahead and skip forward again to Citizens Forum. Okay. So we'll see maybe between these two who is able to join us first. Actually, we'll go ahead and skip forward again to Citizens Forum. Okay. I think Mrs. Heaton's having some technical difficulties. We'll go ahead and skip ahead to the recognitions and come back to Counselor of the Year. Our recognitions tonight are going to be the Golden Horseshoe winners for 2021. And Ms. Miranda Ralph will come forward to present those. Okay. Okay. So we'll see maybe between these two who is able to join us first. Actually, we'll go ahead and skip forward again to Citizens Forum. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. It said that the host needed to let me in, so Dave just let me in. Thank you, Dave. Would you like me to go ahead and do Counselor of the Year?
Yes, the floor is yours, Kristi.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Gilpin, Dr. Murphy, members of the board, senior staff and guests. It is a pleasure to have the opportunity to recognize an exceptional school counselor this evening. The purpose of the School Counselor Award is to recognize a counselor for outstanding service and achievement. To be eligible for nomination, nominees must be currently employed with Berkeley County Schools as a full-time school counselor with at least three years' experience in Berkeley County, and at least one must be at the level they are currently working. A Berkeley County administrator, faculty or staff member, parent or guardian, fellow school counselor, colleague or student may nominate the counselor. The nomination packet must include recommendations from at least three people. The recommendations must include evidence of strong leadership and outstanding implementation of Berkeley County Schools counseling standards. Christopher Shaw is our 2021 School Counselor of the Year. He is a counselor at Musselman High School and has been there since 2012. He was nominated this year by Jacqueline Zacarias and family. She is the parent of one of Mr. Shaw's students. I do want to point out that Mr. Shaw was nominated last year as well. The reason I bring this up is because Mr. Shaw was nominated both last year and this year by a parent, and it was not the same parent. I have never had this happen before. To be nominated two years in a row and have those nominations come from parents truly shows how amazing he is. The parent who nominated Chris last year stated, "Mr. Shaw is the best. My children were blessed to have many school-age years in a fabulous school in upstate New York. Not even their top counselors or teachers can hold a candle to Mr. Shaw. I think that says it all. Personally, I am very grateful to have the opportunity to work with him." Alicia Regelman is the Assistant Principal at Musselman High School. I would like to give her the opportunity to tell you a little bit more about him.
Good evening, senior staff, board members and guests. Tonight, I have the honor of introducing Mr. Christopher Shaw. I've had the pleasure to work with Mr. Shaw for nine years as a colleague and now as an assistant principal. Mr. Shaw has served an essential role as the department chair of the Musselman High School Counseling Department. Under his leadership, we have seen a significant increase in door enrollment numbers, communication methods, including the creation of a counseling website, Twitter page, Facebook page, and a streamlined scheduling process, which has been shared throughout Berkeley County. Additionally, Mr. Shaw has spearheaded our school-wide OVAIS and sources of strength programs, both of which have increased social and emotional awareness within our school. A critical part of a school counseling office is the implementation of a comprehensive counseling program. Mr. Shaw works diligently alongside our counselors to ensure our applicants' needs are met at all levels, socially, emotionally and academically, by following the Western Department of Education's standards and objectives. Mr. Shaw is constantly analyzing school data, including student parent surveys, test assessments, attendance and discipline records to meet the needs of our student population. He displays all the qualities of air and the Aska model. He is a national certified school counselor, which is a direct reflection of his desire to continue enhancing his professional career for the betterment of our students. In closing, I want to share a direct quote from the parent nomination. "Mr. Shaw took an ample amount of time communicating by email and phone with me to ensure I understood what would be accepted and needed for graduation prior to my students' enrollment. He was part of the reason we enrolled her at Musselman High School. His guidance, patience, support and caring manner was exactly what our family needed during this time. Mr. Shaw, even though we didn't know it at the time, his passion for assistance he has given my family shows through and through, and his help have had a positive ripple effect in our lives for many years to come. We are so grateful for all Mr. Shaw has provided for our family, and I can't begin to imagine what he has done for other families in our community as a whole. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Christopher Shaw, your Berkeley County Schools Counselor of the Year."
Just have a few words I'd like to share. I thank Alicia Regelman and Kristi Heaton for sharing their very kind words tonight. Very honored and humbled to receive this award and this recognition. Very fortunate to work in Musselman and Berkeley County community. The nine years that I've spent working in Musselman High School have met many kind and caring families, students, school staff, a few of which are here today, and I'm appreciative of them, and community members. People who are dedicated to their school, their community, and most importantly, their children. Since March of 2020, it's never been more clear how important it is for students to have a positive school environment. This is crucial for their overall well-being. School counselors across Berkeley County work tirelessly to help all students have a positive experience in school. I'm especially grateful to work with a tremendous team in the Counseling Department of Musselman High School. All school counselors fulfill numerous duties and responsibilities. When you boil it down, this is the role of a school counselor, to help students navigate their early life by teaching positivity and resilience. The new for school counselors has never been greater. And I'm grateful to you all, the Board of Education and Berkeley County Schools, for investing in the health and well-being of our students. By expanding access to school-based mental health through programs like Project Aware, increasing the number of school counselors in our schools, and enabling school counselors to focus 100% of their time working with students every day. So I look forward to working with the Musselman community and Berkeley County Schools for many years to come. And I thank you very much tonight for this honor. Thank you.
High-quality staff providing services to students with disabilities across all settings and systems are in place to assure staff are certified, trained and monitored. One big part of this is the, again, the communication between the Special Education Department and other departments within the central office. This has helped with the getting certified staff, getting people trained, and then also monitoring the implementation of that training that is being provided. The role of the Special Education Coordinator, which you have multiple coordinators in the Special Ed Office, has been adjusted to look at instructional practices as well, doing walkthroughs with the principal, and then providing that technical assistance to those teachers when there are needs in specific classrooms. And I believe you have added a couple coordinators as well. Focus Area Four is ongoing monitoring practice or processes for system accountability and delivery of special education services. There has been an expectation that came out of, as a result of our first review, directly from Dr. Murphy, that the principal take an active role in the IP process, including chairing the meetings, ensure IPs are finalized. This is crucial to the whole special education process. That IP chair helps make the decisions, organizes the meeting, can allocate resources. It's a very important role, and the principals have stepped up to take hold of that role. Also, as far as students receiving supplemental services, the supplemental services are provided in general education environment. So when a student with a disability goes into the general education classroom, there are accommodations that are provided to that student. A form or a way to document that those supplemental services are being provided to those students has been developed, and the Special Education Office is monitoring those practices. I wanted to give you an overview of those four. for the sole fact that there has been a shift in how special education is being monitored, being accommodated, and collaborating with the rest of the central office in Berkeley County. I want to commend Dr. Murphy and Mr. Dilly on getting that accomplished over this past year, especially in an untraditional year, say slightly. So I'm going to go ahead and jump into the school reviews, and I'm going to hit some highlights. I'm not going to go over everything in this, and I've sent a document to Mr. Dilly. It was a little bit late, so I'm not sure if you got access to that document or not, but that's the one I'm using for this. And it goes through every school. We went through all six middle schools. We took a team to all six middle schools, looked at the same things at each one, and I want to kind of speak on some commonalities that we saw. We'll start with the highlights. The parents we interviewed at all six schools overwhelmingly expressed an overall satisfaction with their child's school. They felt that it was inviting. They felt that they responded to their questions. You know, we had a few that had some concerns, but it wasn't anything pervasive. And for the most part, those concerns were addressed in a timely manner. The other big highlight is the leadership within the six buildings. The leadership in the six buildings are very strong. Instructional leadership practice were observed at all six buildings, and the overall environment led by those principals was positive. Some of the findings that we, one of the big findings that we found that it was across pretty much all six schools was the co-teaching strategies. So co-teaching strategies were not pervasively observed. One teach, one assist was the primary strategy in most classrooms, and some of those more higher-level strategies where you have the special educator really collaborating with that general education teacher was observed in a few settings, but not across all six schools. And one of the bigger non-compliances that we saw at most schools was students not being case-managed by appropriately credentialed staff. Now, I want to put a caveat in there that this was mainly due to filling positions with long-term subs, which is not entirely in your control. It was observed that you are continuing to post these positions, and you are doing outreach to try to retain and recruit credential special education teachers. So this is something that is a statewide concern with getting teachers, special education teachers that are credentialed and can case-manage those students. So I know I went over the highlights. I didn't want to go into depth with everything because the report is quite long. But I do want to commend some of the things that you have been able to accomplish this past year with special education. I think you guys are going in the correct direction. Of course, everybody needs, has more growth that they can make, but it was a good visit to those six schools. So I would be open for questions or concerns or anything that you guys would need.
Enjoyed working with you in the past and other issues, but did you comment on how we have special ed in a separate building from the regular ed at the highest level? And I think we're talking about bringing them together, if I'm not mistaken.
In a separate building?
Well, we have Dr. Billy, or Mr. Billy down in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know you're, I thought you were referring to a classroom in a different building. No, no, yes, that, I know that was a concern with the first review in the elementary schools. Yeah, it's still not an ideal situation. I know Dr. Murphy had talked about some future plans regarding that. But the good thing with that is the collaboration was obviously increased, even with the separation of the Special Education Office and the rest of the central office. Best-case scenario would be closer proximity, but you know, there are physical restraints of that, and I think Dr. Murphy does have a plan moving forward to address that, I believe. I don't want to speak for him now.
That's correct, Matt.
The second question, special ed generates a lot of paperwork and record-keeping. I know that in the first report on the elementary level, I think that came up. It didn't reappear this time?
Yeah, there were obvious training that has been provided regarding the necessary paperwork that is, that the case manager is responsible for. While we did find some service verifications that were wrong, the amount has decreased significantly. We looked at about the same amount from the elementary to the middle school. So that has improved. Again, it wasn't perfect, but it has improved significantly. And also, the documentation with the supplementary supports was, you know, was observed by the team, and efforts are being made and continually be made to improve overall case management of students.
Mr. Yeller, question? Will we get a copy of this report? Okay, and like be made available to the public as well? Thank you.
Absolutely, and it will be posted on our website. I just checked the link right before I got on here, and it was broken. So I'm going to check in the morning to get that link corrected, and I can send it to Mr. Dilly so you have access to it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, and again, I love working with Berkeley County. Dr. Murphy, appreciate your support, and I hope we can continue this collaboration.
Thank you for being here this evening, Mr. Hicks, and please tell Charlotte and Coburn we appreciate the work of the team, and we look forward to working with you next year.
Great, looking forward to it.
Our next monitoring item is the discussion regarding future capital bonds. Mr. Butts?
Thank you, Dr. Yeller. So while they get that ready, we're going to talk about the future bond considerations tonight. Obviously, we're coming up to consolidate the education facilities plan, which is a 10-year plan for our buildings. We recently heard at a fire board meeting from Business Information Services about our demographics and enrollment growth. And of course, as we hope for COVID to be behind us going into the next year, we need to focus on our facilities and the funding for those facilities. Now, I know some of this information in here you have seen before, but we do want to talk about it and get it on the record. So our current bond situation is we have a 2010 bond that was, when it was floated, was $51.5 million in fiscal year 20. Last year, we refunded that bond and saved the county taxpayers $3.2 million. The balance size of today on that bond is $15,230,000, and this bond will be retired in 2025. It's the only bond we have currently existing, and therefore is part of the 10-year plan. So we'll decently have to fund those. So again, let's review the necessity for a bond plan. Again, we heard from the demographic study that it projected enrollment growth over the next 10 years, and somewhere between 1,100 and 2,900 students. Today, as we speak, there's currently 14 schools with a enrollment capacity. Now, when we looked at that through the demographic study, that was the final schools at 100%. The State Department of Education says the capacity is 85%, and we have many more schools that exceeds the 85% today. By the end of our CFP, our 10-year plan, as many as 23 schools may be over capacity. The report also projected any two to four new elementary schools, a need for an immediate school, additional high school space, and then, of course, we had talked before about a plan for our pre-K program. So when considering the bonds and how to pay for the plan, we have a couple options. One, we could work with County Elections Division. And one, currently, the earliest we could run will be October 2nd of 2021. We would consider a small bond issue at that point in time. It would be $55 million. We'll go into details later of what that is, and I think you've seen this before also. But it deals with mainly our current immediate needs with the buildings. If we do a small bond in October of 21, at some point, we'd have to run a second larger bond to support the construction of the new schools that I just spoke about. And we're estimating that to be between $100, $200 million, depending on how many schools and what size their schools are. Another option would be in 2022, the May would be our primary election. Let me back up for a minute. On the October 2nd, if we run it, that is a special election, and the cost to the county Board of Education would be just over $100,000 to process that. If we run it with the primary election, which is May 22, it does not cost the Board of Education any funding for that. But we consider running a larger bond that encompasses not only the immediate needs of the major improvement programs, so the new schools that I just spoke about. The second bond, the current bond expired 2025, so I have one bond that will be a larger bond. And by delaying it to at least May provides additional time to continue to study our enrollment, come up with a plan for the pre-K analysis, and to prepare the number of schools, drawings, and renders of what their schools may look like to produce for the public's consideration.
Can't hear at all.
Mr. President.
If they could turn it off.
Then again, the next time, should the next time be November, elections stated for the May 22? General election again, it'd be one record. That will expire, and again, it gives us time to do, evaluate where and what type of schools we'd want to. So by doing this would give us a distance between the current bond. So it's like expired in 20, so in June. So that would eliminate us from trying to run it. So it's like at the same time in the fall. So it's actually seven years to complete the process to have this. So immediate needs right now are $54,000, which is why we requested the $55 million consideration for the bond. As you can see, it's spread throughout the community, throughout the county. That's what we've talked about. Again, I believe you've seen this document before, but the immediate needs are HVAC, doors, windows, roofs. Actually, too, that would be the artificial turf for the fields. Same thing for the Marchburg District, their larger projects. Projects would be HVAC again, doors and windows, and then one of the objects would be the performing arts addition to the current building. And the Musliman District, at the 55. A turf field again, safest, secure entrances, roof replacements again, HVAC system, so we have a need throughout the system for creating an update in our HVACs, roofs, and windows. The thought I said is for us to consider, for the board to consider, their decision when and what size bond they would like to run. October possibility, May, primary election, general election. It is not to do one. Fall '21, it does not give us enough time to continue to and to review our pre-K analysis, to identify sites and types and sizes of schools that we would like to construct. So that is our recommendation this time is to consider the May with a November election. And size bond, small bond, initially $55 million, and then follow-up later when the 2025 bond expires.
Yes, sir. I was looking through here. I really want to vote for a school bond to my colleagues, but I want to see instructional bottlenecks addressed. And I'm talking about 7% need for restrooms so that our children are not in the hallway waiting to go to the bathroom, but in the classroom getting a chance to learn. And whether or not someone came up to me after my last discussion and said, "You know, I spend 30 minutes a day with my students out of a 300-minute instructional day plus minutes waiting for my class to go through." We really need to look at instructional bottlenecks because instruction is our job. I mean, everything else is nice and needed, but instruction is our job. And the more time we take out of the classroom, the less time we're doing what needs to be done in the classroom. And I don't believe standing in line waiting to go to the bathroom is a positive environment to teach in while you wait. It's like the old stories we used to hear about the open space classrooms. Teachers, it's your fault that send me visiting those open space classrooms. It wasn't. It was a instructional, structural problem. But one thing that I am concerned about, I see Mr. DiMagna sitting here. I don't want to drag him in because he's here as a citizen, not as a consultant. But the price has landed, and everything is shooting up. And I'm just worried about, you know, where will we be? And how much can we get when we go out and do this?
And that is a real concern with another county in the middle of building a lot of elementary schools. It's 54,000 square feet, and it's over an $18 million price tag, and it's to encompass or house 250 students. So yes, it is a concern, which is why there's such a large gap in the bond amount that we need. Exactly what schools, what size, where.
Okay, the other thing that I know is going up is the price of land. And I know we're slowing, running away from that, and I know Dr. Murphy and you and other people in the office are trying to put away a reserves to try to get the land while it's, one, available, and, two, affordable. So that's another area, but I am dead serious. I even wrote a claim the other night, and I'm not going to delaborate because I want to get out of here tonight. Passioned after Shell Silverstein, where the sidewalk ends and all the other stories, talking about, there's a voice back there saying, "We need more murals on the wall." Literally, not figuratively, literally. We need to get these kids in the classroom and not be shortchanging our buildings with eight facilities for 300 students. It's a bottleneck, and it's not a management problem. It's a short-sighted thing here. So I don't, it's not a joke. It's not a joke. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
And I agree with Mr. Murphy on that because students, especially elementary students, spend a lot of time in the hallway when you go to the restroom. So I guess in the planning process, if that's something that can be considered when the architect does the plan, so that's far ahead of now where we are, but something to consider.
Are there not formulas that account for that? I mean, we don't, when we build a school, we don't do something that other areas don't do or don't take into account, correct?
Yeah.
The School Building Authority has a formula for the number of seats you can have in an auditorium or a gymnasium, so there's got to be a formula for the restrooms.
One of the strengths of the School Building Authority is that we get money to match do-things. But there's a shortcoming of School Building Authority is that they are really, I didn't know they're in touch with what's going on with what they're building. And that's the problem of having centralized decision-making. You build to the minimum and not to the necessity. If they check off and say, and they've checked off in every new school we've built. And I was just up at the Mountain Bridge today. Down a hallway, and I don't know how many classes we were down that hallway. We need to look for bottlenecks or maybe others that we need to consider in designing schools as well. I'm just, I've been catering this one. Thank you for your time.
I thank you. Next to our action items. Next to our action items, the first is the Martinsburg Berkeley County Parks Recreation Request for the adjustment to the annual payment to the Board of Education. Dr. Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Gilpin. We've uh received a request from uh the uh Berkeley County Parks and Recreation uh for the uh payment for this year to be suspended. Uh, previous to my tenure here, Berkeley County Schools provided an agreement in the amount of uh five hundred thousand dollars to be repaid annually at a rate of fifty thousand dollars over ten years. Uh, the County Parks and Rec have made two payments. He suspended the payment last year. Uh, and their request and my recommendation is that we suspend the payment again this year because of uh the recent pandemic, so there still will be a balance of approximately four hundred thousand dollars with uh eight years to uh the term of the loan. So uh I would recommend that we do that. Uh, there's supporting documentation that gives a little bit of background about that, uh and I think it as partnering with them. Uh, I think this is a a fair approach to take at this point in time.
Can I have a motion to accept the adjustment to the payment for Martinsburg Berkeley County Parks and Recreation?
So moved.
A second. Any discussion?
Did Mr. Catlett also request that we forgive the loan?
The the board itself.
Yeah.
Made that request.
Chris Palmer asked that, so. Inconsiderate? I mean, how does everyone feel about that, or is that something that we want to take up at a later time?
I I think it's something we could look at.
I mean, we, but.
As as a member of that board, I I probably wouldn't speak to that, but you you can.
I I just think that what the Rec Board does with the county and what, especially at the Randy Smith Center, what Muslin gets out of that center, and I just think it's something that we need to consider.
Do you have any work sessions planned?
I don't know that we have to make a decision tonight, but I think it's something we we definitely need to consider.
I mean, if you want to make a motion to to change this, or we can vote on this and then come back another time.
Since that wasn't stated that way on the agenda, I think we should just vote on the request and bring it back to that particular request.
I'd like to just, I'd like to bring it back at a later date.
Well, and on the matter of suspending the fifty thousand dollars, I just want to be clear, we're not waiving it, we're tacking it on to the end, we're we're still expecting fifty thousand dollars, but it's.
We're we're basically just changing the terms of the of the of the loan. The balance that's outstanding.
No payment this year, but fifty thousand.
Right, for the next. Yeah, for the next eight years. Now, we did suspend it again last year, so we're actually changing the length of the the term.
Well, I'd like to make sure that we discuss that this at a later date and that we don't kind of get lost. I'd like for it to come back. Thank you.
We can put that on a future agenda. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next action item is the Warehouse Architectural Services Bid. Susan Stalper.
Good evening, President Gilpin, Dr. Murphy, board members and staff. We advertised for RFPs for an architect over the renovations of the new warehouse building located at fifty Coast Guard Drive. The bid opening was held on May twentieth with three companies placing an interest. Bushy Fate Warren Architects or BFM, the Thrasher Group and ZMM Architects. Interviews were held by committee of three, and after review and consideration, it is recommended that BFM be awarded the warehouse renovation contract. Are there any questions?
Just help. I saw where BFM gave you actual numbers, ninety-one thousand dollars for it, am I right?
Right.
ZMM just sent you a rate schedule, so we really didn't get a a bid from Thrasher or ZMM.
Well, they they did not have to do that, actually. Um, but uh we did get fee schedules from Thrasher and from uh BFM. And if you compare those two, you'll notice that BFM was a lot lower in their fee rates. For instance, uh for the principal architect, uh BFM was a hundred and fifty-four and um ZMM was a hundred and eighty. So there's a big difference there. Um, and now BFM did give the ninety-one thousand as um, you know, an estimate of what it would uh cost for their fees uh to be over this renovation. And Thrasher um at one other time had given us a quote of three hundred and twenty thousand, so just there is just a big difference in price. Plus, um this BFM, they interviewed really well. I mean, they came prepared, um very excited about the the project, so I think they'll do a really good job for us.
Okay. I do, I was just trying to figure out where where's the beef, where's the number?
Right, right, right. Yeah, it was a little confusing about how that was handled, but but uh you know, after you looked at all that and 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 and, you know, put it all into uh perspective, you could see that they they were just a lot lower, a lot better price.
Susan, do they um, I mean, you know their reputation and what they've done in the past or?
Yes, and and they have actually uh converted some of the uh, you know, some other grocery stores um into uh, you know, different uh, different uh companies and 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 uh so they've done really well with that. They they had um, you know, they went over all that, they showed us uh, you know, pictures of what they had done. And um even though they have not worked for us previously, um they they do have a really good reputation, they are out of Hagerstown. Um, and so I, like I said, I I I just believe they'll do a good job for us.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to accept BFM's contract for the warehouse services?
Good move.
Second.
Just in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is purchase of iPads. Mr. Kenny?
Good evening, Dr. Gilpin, Dr. Murphy, board members and staff. Um, I'm here this evening to ask the board to approve the purchase of up to four thousand iPads. They'll come with cases and Apple Care. Apple Care is the um, gives us the ability to send them away to Apple for repair or replacement if they're damaged or faulty, and that'll be for three years, that's Apple Care. Um, and these will be replacing older iPads that we currently have in the district. This is not increasing the number of iPads that we have, it's replacing uh some early generation. Apple issues new iPads, a new generation of iPads every year. And it's certain, after a couple, after a few years, it's like three or four, sometimes five years, they stop allowing updates to happen to those older iPads. So we want to kind of be preemptive in a bit, a pit on the older iPads that we have. Replace them with these newer iPads, and that district-wide will give us only the last two generations, the current generation and one previous generation of iPads. So it'll be much easier for us then over the the course of the next few years to look at um replacing iPads as as they age or as we need them. So we we figure we're going to need just about four thousand iPads. I've given you the the price per iPad there, in case it it's a little bit less than that, it could be a little bit less. So if we do the four thousand, it's going to be about a million five hundred thousand dollars. And um we'd be using SRF funding for this, so we've already budgeted for this using SRF. We won't have to use any local funding at all.
Any questions?
I'm really having trouble hearing because the microphone there is not aimed up at the speakers, I think.
Is that over?
That's it.
All right.
Well, I I appreciate this side by side that what you gave us. Uh, so are we going to need all these people, like I see here?
Well, that, and sorry to interrupt you, but that sheet that you have has nothing to do with this set of iPads.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, but that would be for if we were, if we decide down the road to um extend into the middle schools and high schools with iPads. So the answer, the questions that you had were excellent questions, and that sheet that we've provided, um and I think it's it's in the packet, I believe, for all board members, it's literally, it was given to Dr. to Mr. Murphy because you have the specific questions. That's only going to be for um moving into middle school, high school, which we don't see that happening next year. Uh, that's that's going to be down the road.
But the iPads that you've listed here are the ones that are under discussion right now? I mean, not this information, but four thousand iPads, and I'm looking at iPads on this list here. And the advantages of these iPads are the same ones on this paper, right?
Well, they would be the same, yes. They're, but what they're doing is, what we want to purchase here is to replace older iPads that students and teachers already have in their hands that are aging out and
Right.
uh need to be replaced, so.
Because I I noticed in one of the boards, Apple Care does not require in-house repair.
Correct, yes, we can send those away, and our repair people really appreciate that, and people in the schools really appreciate that to forsake their iPad back much more quickly. Now, we have a supply on hand uh as limiters, and so they they come back from Apple.
Okay. How about this number of devices lost and destroyed? I mean, I know we're talking about existing stuff.
Correct.
So we've, we, the existing stuff, we've lost two hundred and forty. Is there any way to recoup the loss?
Um, if they're, if they're totally lost, we have a way to track iPads if they are reported lost, and we have recovered a number that way. But um that number is iPads that were destroyed either accidentally, sometimes intentionally, unfortunately, that's a very low number, but it does happen. And.
How's the student held accountable?
That they are, uh the family is invoiced for it, um and we collect on some of those.
You can't get brought out of turn, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you. I have a motion to accept the purchase of four, up to four thousand iPads to replace older ones.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the Martinsburg High School Fire Alarm Change Order. Stalper.
Um, hello again. Um, upon inspection of the new fire alarm system installed at Martinsburg High School, the fire marshal requested two additional items to be completed resulting in two change orders. The first is for grids and tiles to be installed in the boiler room corridor and the music room vestibule, requiring six sprinkler heads to be relocated and four lighting fixtures replaced at a cost of ten thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars. They also request a second fire alarm enunciator panel be added in the office costing eight thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars. Total cost of both change orders is nineteen thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars. Master Services, the contractor, is still below second low bidder's amount of five hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars at three hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars. It is recommended that approval be given of the change orders to the original Master Services contract. Any questions?
Have a motion to accept the Martinsburg High School Fire Alarm Change Order. Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is the Sourcewell Contract Number zero six one four one seven for the purchase of AEDs and AED supplies. Mr. Butts?
Yes, so this past year, our state legislature requires now AED devices to be at all, at all schools. Uh, so this contract that we're asking for is for ninety-two AEDs to be dispersed throughout the county. We are purchasing them off of and that's why we have the Sourcewell contract. It was pads to replace the older ones that we have now, and this is a typical we have to replace all the batteries and pads, so we're adding ninety-two more to our current exist. This is an unfounded mandate by the state and we can be devices.
Have a motion to accept the purchase of AEDs and AED supplies.
Second.
Motion, second. Any other discussion?
I just will say this, I had no idea those were that expensive. I'm just shocked, yes. I understand a lot, it's costly, isn't it?
Unfortunately, we have used them this year, unfortunately, they work very well.
Well, it's well worth it, that's for sure.
So they're going to every school, right?
Yeah, they'll just be dispersed throughout the the county. Every school, every school has some now, but we just
Any other discussion?
Do we train the entire staff, or do we just train individuals?
I am not sure how that is handled.
It's more efficient, yeah.
Yeah, thumbs up.
Part of the reason for the additional uh AEDs is that every s- sporting event, our band, our courses, they need to have an AED with them. Also, as part of that policy, uh we have to have all of our coaches, uh our directors, uh there's an emergency action plan, anybody that's on that emergency action plan has to be trained in CPR and AED and in first aid, so that's that's a whole process that we have set up with that. It's not certif, we don't have to have them certified, but we do have to have them trained.
But we, I remember back in the day of training service, all of us were trained on CPR and Heinlich and other things. And I I know Michael Plant, the custodian at Winchester, I mean, on two different occasions, one in the school and I think one at one or some saved a person's life in the Heinlich. Uh, so if we have these devices near in the school and I'm just saying, it's it's, if we find a time to train them, I think the return would be very good, not just on the SSAC agenda.
Yeah, and through uh Mr. Stevens' office, uh they have gone through them. Actually, some of our schools even take time, have in the past, have taken time to train various staff and everything, so our staff is trained on the use of the AEDs.
Mr. Dillinger, and I I'm not to belabor this because this has nothing to do, but where are they kept? It just like with the, the band director has one and the
Well, there are various locations in schools. Uh, there's always one in the gymnasium, there's always one by the auditorium. Uh, there's always one uh somewhere else uh in the hallway, and then there's one in the principal's office, and then also our sports teams have had one. And uh, now with this policy, if you are a cross-country team, uh our our cross-country team will have an AED with them at practices and at meets. If you are a golf team, they will, the golf coach will, it's just like a first aid kit.
That's great.
All those in favor of the purchase of these additional AED devices? Opposed? Motion carries. The last action item are the personnel actions. Dr. Schooling?
Good evening, President Gilpin, members of the board. Uh, to start the personnel actions dated Monday, June To start the personnel actions dated Monday, June seventh, twenty twenty-one, one of the actions before you debate is for the Assistant Principal at Mountain Ridge Middle School, Ms. Wendy Kaiser. And she is here in the room with us, so I'd like to point her out to you this evening to get started. We begin with three coaching appointments, one paid, two unpaid. We have eight coaching resignations. We now have thirty appointments for extended school year and the summer library programs on pages one through five. And then beginning on page five, we have full resignation and extra duty contracts. You'll see the personnel action hook up a little bit due to the asset funding and the grant funding. So you'll start seeing a lot of grants listed, and we have nine appointments to those current positions. We have one change of placement for grants. We have eight positions that were created due to grants within the school for Policy Five Thousands. The grants have three substitute renewals. There are twenty-two recommendations of transfers students the grant amounts, and that is on pages eight through eleven. We have one new healthcare appointment at the end of the school year there. We have one person who updated their leave of absence to extend that. Looking at general operating budget positions, we have thirteen new professional employees there as well. We've had one person that was chose not to join us, or there was somebody in that appointment. And we have two that are revising these school nurses have chosen to start earlier and be able to work some of our summer programs at this point. We have seven changes in assignments. We have five of the epic indexes to be extended again this year at the request of Epic. We have three mutual agreements of professional personnel and one correction of when the, the change in service was to occur. We have three other Policy Five Thousands. We have six individuals on the professional transfer list to remove and assign to a position. We have seventeen individuals on the professional side to resign, and I draw your attention to line one forty-six with Dr. Verneek Walker's retirement resignation. We have one correction of the retirement due to location. We had nine transfers of professional service personnel, and that's where you'll see Ms. Kaiser's recommendation. We do need to remove line one fifty-nine, that has not made it through the process yet, so please remove line one fifty-nine. We have one transfer to rescind that transfer, the individual will be staying at Orchard View. Now, we begin our service personnel appointments. We have three change of assignments. Unfortunately, we did have a young employee pass away last month. We have one application of unpaid suspension and termination, and that is Russell Maysa Rod. We actually have five service personnel removed from the transfer list and assigned. Line one sixty-nine is actually just a regular transfer, they got it in the wrong column. There are eight service personnel resignations, two new retirements of service personnel. We have eleven service personnel transfers. And then beginning on page twenty-three, we have a hundred and seventy-six appointments of service and professional personnel for the service or the SOE program at the elementary, intermediate, and middle school levels. So then on page thirty-seven, after all the SOE appointments for the summer, we have six new service personnel for the substitutes. One correction to the right classification in substitute. Two substitute resignations on service. Ten substitute teachers that are new to Berkeley County, some of these are retirees. Getting on our substitute list tonight, we have two resignations of substitute teachers. And now we'll begin the removal of our substitute contracts for this school year. We have seven substitutes for nurses. We have a hundred and fifty-eight service personnel substitutes to renew their contracts on pages thirty-eight through forty-five. Beginning on page forty-six, we have our certified substitute teacher. These are individuals that hold a full teaching certificate, and there's a hundred and seventy-seven of those individuals. Beginning on page fifty-six, because the last line was actually heading on fifty-five. So fifty-six through sixty-seven is our long-term substitute teacher contract renewals. These are individuals that have at least twelve hours in any subject area when they're transcripts, as well as completing a substitute training workshop to get their license in the state of West Virginia. Beginning on page sixty-seven, we have our short-term substitutes, there are eleven of those. Those are individuals that have done the substitute teacher workshop, have a minimum of a bachelor's degree, but do not have the twelve hours in any one particular area. Also, this is the first year you will have the ability to renew the short-term restricted substitutes. There are two, two individuals there, and those individuals have the new associate degree. They cannot work more than ten days in the same classroom consecutively. That just went into code this year under the state board policy. For a total of nine hundred and fifty-eight personnel actions for your consideration this evening.
Can I have a motion to accept the professional service coaching and substitute personnel actions with the removal of line one fifty-nine noted? These are dated from Monday, June seventh.
Same.
Have a second?
Second.
All those, or any discussion?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Dr. Schooling, how are we doing with filling the summer positions for the summer school?
Our staffs are meeting tomorrow with the Department of Instruction to look at whether there might be holes, to see where we need to try to do some recruiting. As you can see here, we did a fairly good number of employees. Transportation has all their runs covered. Mrs. Hack is working with our coach, trying to get basic programs moving and what's going on. Donna, we have a better idea of working with Kim, A.G., with the SOE program.
We're still finalizing a few positions. We feel pretty solid right now with our secondary. We, over the weekend, we had a few of our elementary, the head committed for, for various reasons, had to withdraw, so we're trying to finalize those. But we've had over two thousand students enroll in our summer, all of our summer programs total. So it's quite an undertaking.
I assume we'll be to the, probably to the end there before we get those positions filled.
Yeah, we'll work up to the students early and afterwards try to fill. As some of the positions are one week, one week covered, so we'll work to continually bring you more names.
I, I would like to say this, I would hope maybe next year that we consider paying those individuals further holiday pay. I would have liked to have done that this year, but it was a little late in the process when I asked about it. So I wish we would consider that for the next year.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Long, we'll make note of that. First, what were the numbers for the epic arrangements, the employee numbers?
One fifteen, starting at one fifteen.
One fifteen to, I guess, one nineteen?
Yes, the two are indicated with a supplement, and the other two, I believe, are a fixed stipend amount.
So what, those numbers for? Mr. Butts?
These were approved last week at the Epic Board Meeting on Thursday, I can't remember what day it was. It's five of the accounting staff who provides fiscal services to Epic.
Okay.
Two payroll, two payroll, one professional accountant, the Assistant Treasurer.
Okay, but the position numbers, I, I just didn't catch it.
There's five of them, there's five staff.
Absolutely. Okay. On the SOE, thank you, Mr. Butts. On the SOE, are the, are the people working four days a week or five days a week?
The program itself is four days a week, but individuals can work mornings, afternoons, two weeks out of the six weeks, whatever it might be, to fit their schedules to get the coverage.
Okay, so are they paid for four days? That week was, I know it's Monday through Thursday for the students, Friday's off.
Correct, and it's basically what they turn in on their time sheet, it's not a set everyday payment.
Okay, not every day.
So it's whatever they were turning on their time sheet. This just authorizes the effective dates that they could turn in time sheets during their time period.
Yeah, I, I share Mrs. Ms. Long's concern. I was looking elsewhere in the personnel list, we had, I think, eight or nine people going from a lower number up to two sixty-one, which gave them vacation time and everything else. And when I first looked at the personnel list, we had a hundred and twenty-six SOE employees. And I was thinking, well, let's eliminate the vacation time for the eight and take those hundred and twenty days and give them Fourth of July off. It'd be pretty close to revenue neutral, but now I see we're up to a hundred and seventy-six, and I don't want to be doing anything physically irresponsible, but here is an example. I have the haves and the have-nots. And the people who are out there working with the children, touching the lives of the children, whether they're delivering the bus, or teaching the lesson, or cooking the meal, they're in direct, they're in direct control. And since in our system, we give them the have-nots, who will not get a Fourth of July payday or a West Virginia holiday. We have us against them. And we wonder why people look at us and say, us against them? And I'll repeat it time and again. The haves should not go through the channel line before the have-nots are going through the channel line. And I'll repeat it time and again, because I believe that. And I think that we sent a bad message when we said, well, these people, we're not going to give them a holiday. We're not going to give them a vacation day. But we expect them, and we're going to get them to do this, and they should be grateful for having a chance to work in the summer, when they normally are unemployed, but don't draw unemployment. So I feel strongly that this is a bad message. I, I'm real impatient of this long, as she's waiting for next year. I think we should have done it this year and found it. But we have to stop thinking about ways we can save money for one group of people by working them, but not giving them a holiday. But another group, they did it. And I, I don't question the legality of it.
That's what I'm saying, it has more to do with legality and the grievance process and the possibility of you being open there versus a pay and two days worth of holiday pay. Well, it sets a bad precedent legally for future versatile educations.
It's a bad precedent, I would want to press against that argument. Well, I, I respect your argument, but I think it's a bad example to tell our workforce. We need you. You work for us and you're paying, but when the gravy's being passed out on the mashed potatoes, we're not getting it. Only the haves get it, only the up here gets it, only, only the chosen few. And it's a bad message to send, and I disagree that we, if we thought about it, we could find a way to pay these people in the future. And we should have been thinking about it, yeah. And I strongly feel that this is the wrong message to send to our employees. And they work the day before the Fourth of July and the day after the Fourth of July, but they don't get paid for the Fourth of July like other people do. Thank you.
I'm just hoping that next year we can change that procedure, because counties can do it, there are counties that pay all that. So this is something that I hope that we can do next year.
All those in favor of the personnel actions?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Board announcements?
Yes, here it is. I was just wondering, and this is to Dr. Murphy, but we don't have a deadline coming up on us on the superintendent's evaluation, do we?
Yes, we do.
We do.
Okay, I just Something, June
The end of the month.
Yeah. I didn't know, I thought it was twenty-something, but we have a little bit.
Superintendent's announcements?
Meeting Board Members, a couple of items that are not part of the slides that I'd just like to cover this evening as just a reminder or just a recognition. I'm gonna just revisit and congratulate Wendy Kaiser, who's in the back. Wendy, would you please stand and be recognized? She's a new appointee of our Assistant Principal. And she's going to be out with Dr. Branch at Mountain Ridge Middle. I'd also like to take this opportunity as part of your personnel actions whilst accepting the resignation of Dr. Verneek Walker. I've had the pleasure of working with Dr. Walker now, coming up on almost two years, and have enjoyed her as a colleague and also leader in our Equity and Inclusion Office with People's Services. We wish Dr. Walker well. She's exploring a number of different options, and I know she will do well in whatever avenue she selects. But Dr. Walker, if you could please stand so we could recognize you as well. So earlier this evening, we recognized all our retirees. I do want to make a special note of thanks again to Phoebe Brent in our Communications Department who helped organize this evening, as well as Elaine Bobo and Tabitha Porterfield. And my error, it's getting to know just a number of different people. I once knew a Pam Brock, but it's Michelle Brock in HR. And so I want to make sure that I thank her as well for the work that she did in making this evening a success for our retirees. We've got report cards available as of June the eighth. Those will be made available through Schoology. And so be looking for those, if you would like a hard copy, of course, schools will be able to provide those for you. I want to recognize our board members as, but the past two weeks, we've had the pleasure of attending a number of different high school graduation venues along with Mr. Dillinger. And here we are at Musselman, that was one of the kickoff events that in Hedgesville for the first week, we had over a thousand thirteen hundred graduates this year. We also had a hundred and thirty-two of those graduates received a promised scholarship. And we had over twelve point eight million dollars of scholarships awarded. When we look also at where our graduates are headed next year, we've got close to sixty-six percent of them going on to some type of post-secondary education. We've got twenty-six percent of them moving right into their careers. We've got almost five percent of them joining the military. We still have a number of them, which was a category that I fell into, of almost four percent of them still undecided. So we wish all our graduates well, and especially for our seniors. We had a variety of different celebrations from drive-through to traditional, and I think we enjoyed all of them. The, the final evening was here at Spring Mills, and I think we were, we were going strong up until the nine o'clock hour, which, you know, everyone got through, and I think it was a good success. So thank you to our principals who made that possible. We talked a little bit about summer learning and SOE. As of this evening, we've got close to fifteen hundred students are registered. You can kind of see the breakdown there as well. We are also going to be running a credit recovery for high school students, and that's going to add approximately right now, as we talk, somewhere between an additional four to five hundred students. I want to thank a number of people, curriculum instruction, human resources. Kim Agee is also helping, retired principal, helping kind of coordinate and organize, working very closely with Mr. Dillinger and Mr. Banks, and then also Tabitha Porterfield, who's kind of been the technological brain with helping in the back backgrounds. We've got our Berkeley Counters, Berkeley County School Skills U coming up, starting tomorrow. And what it is, it's a professional development activity where members come and participate and learn from our staff. We've got approximately a hundred and eighty-two already signed up. We've got a hundred and three sessions, and it's going to be spanning Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and ending about midday on Friday. And we've got over close to seventy presenters. Jessica Keller, Sharon Dove, Derek Goldfield are kind of the, the brainchild behind, or brain trust behind this. And I also know that we have one of our school board members who is going to be part of the presenter corps, so we look forward to seeing how that presentation goes. We have curbside meals that are going to be running June fourteenth through August the ninth. We are only going to be running one location, and that's going to be South Middle School, so thank you to Ms. Heck and her entire team. And we're going to be offering five-day meal kits right now. And again, I think our curbside meals have been very, very successful, and I know that will continue through the, through the summer. We've got a vaccination booster clinic for students and families, and this is a follow-up to an earlier clinic that we offered on June fifteenth. And you can see there, the total number of vaccines that we have scheduled. Again, this is kind of a part, part for students and families, but also there are still some staff that are participating. The student pictured here is Sean Wood, and his mom is there with him from South Middle School, and he's receiving his vaccination. We're going to be celebrating Flag Day on June the fourteenth, as well as Juneteenth on June nineteenth. Kind of a little bit of history here on these holidays. President Woodrow Wilson issued a presidential proclamation to establish Flag Day on June fourteenth back in nineteen sixteen. And many Americans celebrate Flag Day by displaying red, white, and blue in front of their homes or businesses. The day commemorates the adoption of the Stars of Stripes as our official flag in the United States. And Juneteenth is also the day of independence or freedom. It is considered the oldest celebration commemorating the end of slavery in the United States, and the celebration of the milestone holiday is spread across the US and beyond. It originated back to Galveston, Texas, where on June nineteenth in eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers led by Major General Warden Granger landed in the city with news that the Civil War had ended slavery, and slaves were now free. We also are going to be celebrating West Virginia Day, which is coming up on June twentieth. And again, this day was established on April twentieth eighteen sixty-three, and then became effective on June twentieth eighteen sixty-three with an act of legislation. And we, as a result, are going to be celebrating that day, because where it falls this year, on Monday, June twenty-first, as a state holiday. I also want to make note that this will be the second-to-last meeting that we will be holding here at Spring Mills High School. We will have our final meeting of the year on Tuesday, June the twenty-second here at Spring Mills. And then following that, we will be returning to the board office for our regular meetings as scheduled. So just mark your calendar or make that adjustment, and, you know, we'll be sending reminders about that. Again, I think graduations were successful, I know we enjoyed it, it was great to see many of the students and families out, and I think they were most appreciative. A lot of feedback and energy in preparing for that was, was well worth it. So the school year has ended, and it's on to SOE and making preparations for us to start next school year with all of our students returning to school, and we're looking forward to that. So thank you, Dr. Gilpin.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So.
Motion, second, any discussion, all those in favor?